I'm David Title, Superintendent of Schools. Very proud to be the Superintendent of Schools here in Fairfield. And this is the time of year as we head toward the finish line of another school year where we get to honor the students and their families who make us proud. And so, we're going to try to bring some order to this. In order to move this along very quickly, we limited the remarks to a very brief paragraph on each student. So, we're going to start with the Superintendent's Awards. And the students should be in alphabetical order within level by alphabetical by level. So, we have all the elementary kids first, alphabetical by school, then the middle school alphabetical by school, then the high school. Then, we're going to do the Cabe Awards, which is middle school, high school, in the same order. And that's how we're going to run it out. So, I'm going to call the student's name, read, and have the student come out, and then I'll read a bit about them. The principal will join me along with Mrs. Iacano, who's the Chair of the Board of Education. All right? And the goal is to be done in 30 minutes or less. It's like a speedy oil change. Okay. So, our first recipient, and I believe we have a teacher, Nancy, standing in for Mr. Cass. All right? So, our first recipient, come on over here. It's Maddie Walker. Maddie, congratulations. Stay right here. Maddie's an exceptional student, self-motivated, an extraordinary writer, entering her work into a variety of writing contests whenever possible. She dedicates one day a month cooking for local homeless people with her church community. Following a family vacation to Africa, Maddie helped her mom organize a pen pal and fundraiser program with the Masai students in the Ullis Nun School. Volunteers in Burr's Leadership Program to help others feel accepted by their peers. Congratulations, Maddie. Our next recipient from Dwight Elementary School, Sage Factora. Sage, come on out. Sage is known as a student who leads others to think differently. She enjoys sharing her diverse strategies and thoughts with her teachers and peers, enjoys having a big sister who looks out for her while she looks out for her little sister. Sounds good to me. Sage believes her most important trait is her energy, while the staff believes it is her compassion for all people that makes her stand out from her peers. From Holland Hill Elementary School, Carolyn Nesbit. Come on out. Carolyn is enthusiastic and energetic and seizes every opportunity to be involved. Is a member of the Challenge Program School Band, Safety Patrol, Holland Hill Heroes, and the Job Corps. Along with her family, she has assisted in the monthly preparation of meals for Operation Hope, has donated toys to the Bridgeport Rescue Mission, and every year puts together a box filled with gifts that is distributed through Operation Christmas Guild by Samaritan's Purse. In her spare time, I thought that's what you did in your spare time. In her spare time, she helps her neighbors with their yard work, visits the elderly, and is a member of the Fairfield County Children's Choir. She enjoys being helpful and likes helping those who are alone. From Jennings Elementary School, Cassandra DiPiero. Cassandra represented Jennings School at the state level in the Reflections Contest for her poem Together We Can Believe. She plays the viola and participates in Honors Orchestra as a section leader, is a competitive diver on the Next Generation Diving Team, and participates in Jump Rope for Heart, and is an active volunteer with the Girl Scouts. McKinley Elementary School, Nikki Crescione. He frequently goes beyond what is expected academically and eagerly accepts challenges in all subjects. Nick has been selected as the recipient of the Person of Character Award for three years. He is always caring, treats others with respect, and is responsible and fair. Serves as a member of the MKTN News Broadcast at school, is a member of Student Council, Drama Club, McKinley Singers, and the Orchestra. He has participated in Relay for Life, Fairfield Honors Orchestra, and is on a number of sports teams. This year, he received the Player of the Year Award for Basketball. Please welcome from Mill Hill Elementary School, Chris Benton. Chris is a natural leader and a superb role model. He consistently is prepared and actively participates in all classroom activities. He can always be counted on to provide responses that are thoughtful and often lead to advanced discussions. He participates in Student Council, is part of the town Honors Orchestra, and an active baseball player. Last fall, he organized a group of friends to rake leaves for senior citizens. Through his church, he participates in bake sales to benefit the American Red Cross. He organizes his own lemonade and cookie stand, and then donates the proceeds to various charities. This year, he plans to participate in the Relay for Life event. From North Stratfield Elementary School, Zoe Gefta. She is self-motivated and conscientious student who excels in all academic areas and displays her musical versatility playing piano, viola, and clarinet. She volunteers at the Fairfield County Food Bank and Soup Kitchen, the Holy Trinity Greek Orthodox Homeless Luncheons, Jump Rope for Heart, Locks for Love, is in her second year as a Girl Scout and assists with a Brownie Troop. She's well-known throughout the school as a student to be counted on, whether it is performing a parachute routine at the school's Veterans Day Program, being a bus buddy to the kindergarten students who are helping to stack chairs after band and chorus. Osborne Hill Elementary School, Luca Holdery. Language arts is her favorite subject. She works with special needs students to lead themselves to interact with others and also engages in activities with them outside of school, participates on Team Relay for Life, raising money for cancer research. She participated on Student Council for two years, plays percussion instruments in the school band as an active member of the Girl Scouts, plays on the softball and basketball team, likes to ski, and likes to ride a unicycle even though it is challenging. From Riverfield Elementary School, Francis Oe. Francis is an avid reader and writer who loves to draw cartoons and build models. His great passion is to one day become a filmmaker, director, and he spends much of his spare time shooting movies and enhancing them on the computer. He won Best in State for the PTA-sponsored Reflections Contest three consecutive years for his videos, and recently was awarded Honorable Mention in the Fairfield University Poetry for Peace Contest. He is a book reviewer for Bank Street College writing reviews of children's books. From Roger Sherman Elementary School, Caroline Dayton. Her passion is reading. She loves to read. She never goes anywhere without a book. This past summer, she read over 100 books and has read over 100 books so far this school year. Can I have you talk to my daughter? Plays soccer, takes acting lessons, and participates in the Sherman Sharks Swim Club and the Blue Team Swim Program at the YMCA. Volunteers on the weekend at Park and Rec, at the Pony Farm in Fairfield, feeding and grooming the ponies. She organized a coin drive with her challenge group to raise funds for Hyfer International, that could be Heffer, raising enough money to purchase a cow, sheep, and other livestock for an African village. Congratulations, Caroline. I worked so hard to get the kids' names right, I didn't pay enough attention to the script. From Stratfield Elementary School, Anna Rupert. Anna enjoys helping others. She's active in Girl Scouts, a member of one of Stratfield's Odyssey of the Mind Teams, and helps out in the main office at Stratfield School. Volunteered to be a math mentor to help a struggling math student and assisted in many early morning math sessions. She's an accomplished writer and artist, always finds time to help, to give to others, whether it is a mother's helper for her neighbor or volunteering to make and deliver food to a needy family. We're on to the middle school. Roger Ludlow Middle School, Grade Eight, Emma La Place. At middle school, you get three escorts. Emma is highly motivated, determined, and confident. She has achieved high honors throughout her middle school experience, has crafted an amazing talent of acting through her involvement in the Drama Club and various theater companies throughout Fairfield County. Is a member of the Wakeman Torch Club, a mentor in the Character Education Program, and has received Ludlow Citizenship Award twice. She is goal-oriented and has defined herself as a true leader in the Roger Ludlow community. From Tomlinson Middle School, Ronnie Lamontaine. Ronnie has been a team organizer in the Tomlinson Touch Outreach Program, which inspired him to continue to assist the elderly in his neighborhood with their yard work and other projects. Because Ronnie lost both of his grandfathers to lung cancer, he works to raise awareness and funding for this cause. He and his family have also worked together to raise over $7,000 to benefit the Connecticut Children's Medical Center. Ronnie contributes to the memory of his cousin through a scholarship fund and recently participated in Miles for Memories, a walk organized to raise money for teens killed in motor vehicle accidents. He has, in his words, "made a conscious effort to be less of a bystander and more of a leader through example." Now, I should point out that we did not omit Fairfield Woods Middle School from this ceremony. However, the eighth grade is on a field trip to Washington, which is the same thing that happened last year. And so, we will honor the Fairfield Woods students at the May 22 Board of Education meeting. So, please don't think, you know, what happened to them. We do have, from the Alternative High School, Elizabeth Sage Pickard. Sage has consistently been an honor roll student at the Alternative High School. As a leader of the Student Council, she shows a strong commitment to helping all students have a voice at the Alternative High School Program. Her sense of fairness and respect for her fellow students and teachers is evident daily, as well as her ability to model respect for others to emulate. Fairfield Ludlow High School, Warner House, Brandy Stawicki. Brandy donates her time and talents to the school community, is a member of the National and Spanish Honor Societies, is a member of the Fairfield Ludlow High School Cross Country Team, and was elected captain in her senior year, has served as class secretary, president of the Spanish Honor Society, and was secretary of the Earth Action Club for two years. She participates in the Ludlow Leader Program, Make-A-Wish Club, and has worked on the Relay for Life Cancer Fundraiser for four years. Our Webster House recipient is at a lacrosse game. So, we will invite her to the next meeting if she can make it. So, we'll go on to Wright House. And the Wright House recipient is Melissa Warden. Melissa enjoys learning, questioning, and working with others. Last year, as part of a class competition, Melissa proposed Project Post, P-O-S-T, promoting optimism, spreading tolerance. Melissa asked her peers to write kind statements on post-it notes and posted them on a bulletin board in the main hallway. For weeks, students could be found reading the notes, and faculty and students reported that the entire tone of the school changed during that period of time. She is an officer of the Make-A-Wish Organization, is a major contributor to the 2012 Club and the Keystone Club. Been a four-year varsity field hockey and basketball player, and is a first-chair flutist having played since grade five. On to Fairfield Ward High School, Fitzhouse. The recipient is Sarah Green. Sarah is editor-in-chief of the school newspaper, The Focus, and student columnist with the Daily Fairfield Newspaper. Served as an intern with the Young Artist Studio, president of the China Care Club, fundraising for four successful surgeries for children with birth defects, president of the Interact Club sponsored by the Fairfield Rotary Club, a member of the National Honor Society, and a member of the Fairfield Ward High School Chamber Orchestra, and a participant in the Fairfield County Strings Festival. From Pequot House, our winner is Jillian Bernstein. Jillian has been a team captain for Relay for Life for four years and has spent countless hours raising funds and attending key events for the American Cancer Society, and was president of the Youth American Cancer Society in her sophomore year. Has given a tremendous amount of time to her school community as treasurer of the National Honor Society, the Class Council, and even went to the middle school last year to help transition incoming freshmen to Fairfield Ward High School. Tutors fellow students in math and science and participates in service activities to benefit Habitat for Humanity, the Jewish home for the elderly and the Israeli Army. Has been a member of the JV and varsity lacrosse team for the past three years. The recipient from Townsend House is Timothy Veat. Timothy is a member of the National Honor Society, participates in the varsity soccer and golf teams, had the lead role in the Fall 2011 School Musical, co-created the all-male a cappella group, the Acaphellas? Just read what they put here. That's good. Okay. I believe it. Co-anchored Ward TV and co-created the Junior Statesman Club. Started the Junior Statesman of America Chapter at Ward, and that allowed Tim, with the assistance of his peers, to sponsor a student for the holiday season to have active debates regarding student issues and to attend the 2012 Junior Statesman of America Convention. For the past four years, Tim has been a role model for his peers by demonstrating the core values of Fairfield Ward High School, I knew they would fit this in, by becoming welcoming, academic, respectful, dynamic, and ethical, in case you didn't know. Congratulations to all the Superintendent's Award winners. As you can see, that, those awards are given for students who have gone above and beyond the call of duty, particularly in service, but also in academics and other areas. We're on to the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Awards, which is the statewide organization that represents boards of education in the state. From Roger Ludlow Middle School, Gabriela Natoli. Gabriela has been on the double accelerated math tracks since sixth grade, along with earning high honors all three of her middle school years. Has been selected twice by her middle school teachers to receive the Ludlow Middle School Citizenship Award, is a stellar athlete, and was on the New England Softball Championship Team, along with being on a two-time state champion softball team, and she's also on the Roger Ludlow Middle School Cross Country and Track Teams. Takes time out of her busy schedule to assist younger Fairfield Little League softball players. Our other eighth grade winner from Roger Ludlow Middle School is Thomas Magnuson. He's made high honors every quarter during his time at Roger Ludlow Middle School, is a member of the Wildcats Football Organization and Wakeman Lacrosse. He has been awarded the Wakeman Lacrosse Coaches Award four years in a row, a member of the Boy Scouts, and he has received the Arrow of Light Award. A member of St. Pius Church, he is an altar server and participates in the choir, and he has received the Roger Ludlow Middle School Citizenship Award all three years. Tomlinson Middle School, Lauren Rebey. Lauren is articulate and witty. Her inquisitive mind spurs her to find interest in almost any topic. She fought against early childhood allergies, shows tremendous perseverance and dedication to her clubs and activities, and is always willing to help others. She has performed community service at a local nursery school, participated in Relay for Life, and to quote Lauren, she has, quote, "promised herself to live by the four character traits: caring, respect, responsibility, and honesty." John Bukus is our other Tomlinson Award winner. He's an engaging student who likes a good joke and possesses a maturity beyond his years. Plays competitive baseball? Good. Glad I got that right. Plays alto and baritone saxophone in the Greater Bridgeport Youth Orchestra. After breaking his collarbone fielding a baseball, he found an alternative method to hold his sacks and still participate in the GBYO. One of his greatest strengths is his calm approach and demeanor. His work ethic is strong, and he always strives to do his best. Fairfield Ludlow High School, Amanda Kwong. Amanda is co-president of the Student Representative Council. Face the crowd, smile for mom. Has worked with the Special Olympics for the past four years and is publicity chair of the annual Relay for Life event. Has served for four years on the Class of 2012 Council, as well as the Key Club where she is the publicity director. In the summer of 2010, Amanda traveled to South Africa as part of the People-to-People Student Ambassador Trip, an eye-opening experience for her, and she is an engaging and energetic young woman. Also from Fairfield Ludlow High School, this is Arvind Kalra. He's a member of the National Honor Society, Math Honor Society, and Science Honor Society. Created a math club that assists younger students interested in competing in national math competitions. It started with Arvind and a few friends and has grown into a place where over 50 students go each weekend to enhance their skills. He has taken on the role of head teacher of the club. Plays alto and baritone saxophone in the Greater Bridgeport Youth Orchestra after break -- no. Is that right? No. Something is goofed up here. We got the math club right?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, he knows what he wants and will stop at nothing to achieve his goal. How's that? All right. Pardon the interruption. All right. Fairfield Ward High School, Angie Walker. Come on out. Angie's a member of the National Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, the Math Honor Society, and the Dartmouth College Book Award. She has a genuine commitment to helping those in need through her leadership in the Red Cross Club and in the Student Organization Stand devoted to helping the people of Darfur. Has been named a CIAC Scholar-Athlete, a National Merit Commended Scholar, and has received one of Girl Scouts' highest honors, the Silver Award. Also from Fairfield Ward, Hervis Vukag. He is fluent in Albanian, his native language, and English. Has consistently sought academic challenges and has worked exceedingly hard since his arrival in our country in seventh grade. Was selected for the National Honor Society and designated as a scholar in mathematics and social studies at the Annual Underclass Awards Assembly. Has worked in political campaigns on the local and national levels, is responsible for forming the Junior Statesman Club at Ward, and last year was selected to serve as a congressional page in Washington, DC during the first semester. It would surprise no one at Fairfield Ward to one day see Hervis holding an important elected office. We have two more awards to give out before we close the program, and I have two minutes to do it. One is for another student at Ward High School, Kay Nishimura-Gasparian. Come on out, and I'll explain why he's getting an award. Kay has quite a record in math competitions. Has been the highest scorer in the Fairfield County Math League for two years in a row, and this year led the Fairfield Ward team to a second-place finish in the Fairfield County Math League, Ward's highest finish to date, and a second-place finish at the state competition. He will be part of the state team traveling to Penn State University -- that was not a plant -- to compete in the regional competition in June. Kay has also taken on the challenge of the American Mathematics Competition. He scored so well on the first two rounds of the exam that he is now in the top 0.25% of all test takers throughout the country. He's 270th out of 110,000. Do the math. We are awaiting his score for round three, which was a two-day, nine-hour exam. He's doing this voluntarily. If his score is high enough, he will qualify to represent the United States in an international competition this summer in South America. Truly amazing. Special award to Kay. We have one more award to recognize, and I'm going to ask Catherine Giff, President of the PTA at Fairfield Ward High School, to do the recognition. Catherine?
Thank you. We were all really excited at Ward to hear that Jim, the man who takes no credit for himself, who is always sharing the credit, finally had some credit just foisted upon him. It's been said before, but it's always good to hear the Ward acronym: welcoming, academic, respectful, dynamic, and ethical. Jim, you define that, you embody the qualities, and you truly model that for all of our community. So, on behalf of the Ward PTA and the entire parent community, your staff, your students, it has been an honor to work with you and to see you finally recognized as the outstanding High School Principal of the Year for the State of Connecticut. High School Principal of the Year for the state of Connecticut.
Despite what you may have heard, it's not a farewell tour, so. Although I'm beginning to feel that way, but I, I really am a little embarrassed by the attention, but very proud of the way our parents feel about their children's experience at our school. And for the small part I play in helping make that happen, it is a proud experience for me, and I'm most proud of the kids and the administration and the staff and the teachers who make that experience for our school happen every day. And I'm just proud to represent them. So thank you for your attention tonight, and I hope this is the last attention we
Thank you all for coming out. You should all be very proud, parents, staff members, principals, other school leaders in attendance for all that the students have achieved here in this school system. We could have this every night between now and the end of June and not run out of qualified kids to give this to. So this is really special and is really just, I think, a symbol of the excellence that we have here in the Fairfield Schools and we are going to continue to have in the Fairfield Schools for many years to come. So we invite you now, we're going to take a break because we are going to have a board meeting in here, and we do have members of the Board of Education seated down in the front, and I'm sure they would love to welcome and shake hands with the recipients. So if they could come down here, if you could come down, and we'll take a short break, and then I'm going to turn the rest of the night over to Mrs. Iacono. Thank you all very much.